All right, we are gonna call the meeting to order and begin with the pledge of the flag, please.
I believe it is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, a mother God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Very unflattered. Well, we got some new faces on the pitch, wonderful. Uh, I will open for no- uh nominations for chair, please.
I will vote to nominate Matt Everett for chair.
Second to that nomination?
Yes.
There are any other nominations for chair?
Chair.
Hearing none. Uh, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Matt for chair? Those opposed, it carries unanimously, five to zero.
Oh yes, and we'll like that vice chair, so I make a motion on the vice chair.
Make a motion, make Lindsey, your chair now.
Awesome. Us get a motion to second, uh, any other nominations, discussion? See none, all in favor?
I vote for myself.
Number five here, uh, review and approve the minutes of February nineteen. It's a motion.
Second?
A second, any discussions? See none, all those in favor? So everybody? Uh, review and approve the minutes of the twenty twenty-five annual town meeting.
So.
There's a motion, second, uh, any discussion?
Yes, real quick, uh, I should have caught this one out of the gate. Um, it's been posted on Facebook and on the town website, but the tie that was reported at the annual town meeting for the final position on the select board was resolved, getting the Eastler, uh, with Rover in his seat, uh, as select board member. And Jeff King, uh, then was to pursue the seat, so welcome Jeff, he is our fifth and final member this year. Um, and I think you familiar with everybody around the table?
Yep.
Uh, but his information will be available online right aside the rest of you and will be updated materials for that, so. Uh, congratulations to you and thank you to Pam, um, for working through this. We'll look forward to it.
Thank you. Okay, this is motion second, any further discussion on the minutes of the town meeting? See none, all those in favor? Everybody? Uh, and members report, so we'll start with Lindsey.
So I know that it's technically not a town road, but we've got those giant holes like at our light again that are like, you know.
Everything was filled today, yes.
Was it?
I haven't.
River roads done, I think they did the lights here, I think everything's done, yes.
I don't know.
Well, I don't think the one over here was done.
Oh, okay.
Cause the big one, you take it right there and then there were actually some.
Oh, I thought it was done yesterday.
No, 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 I have like. I bonded myself up like.
It was yesterday.
Pretty badly.
Need one on the river roadway, I won't stand. You could go on like Google, contact or D M C, region, main DOT, we are region three, west, it's a simple form.
You look right in the camera and tell everybody.
Yeah, main DOT, contact or region, then it's region three, it is a simple form, name, email address, not to give them your phone number or anything else.
Yeah.
And you can say there's a pothole near Maple Street, a river road.
It's a crater, yes.
They are required to respond to that, that is that twenty-four hour notice that you need for claim on your vehicle.
Yeah.
They monitor that, they look at all of the numbers and the response rate and closing of those tickets. That is the tool that I use when I saw a thing on social media and it was less than forty-five minutes before they were out on River Road fixing that pothole near box two forty, so do the best that you can, feel free to call us and duplicate that, but it's wonderful if you don't call us and have us do it, because you've actually been there to witness it.
Yes.
Um, it is a wonderful tool if they do track the vendors associated with it.
I think.
Good, right on?
Yeah.
It's a good one.
Wrong?
That's all I had. Well, I got something, probably should have said it before, but I get a cou- couple, I didn't really complain today, but that block voting, all them articles and the amount of money that is being spent on something, I was thinking one was growing, they should have been at least read off. And any of them like, another guy had a comment that he wanted, them over a hundred thousand ought to be voted individually.
There wasn't money once and the ones that were grouped together though, were there?
Oh, yeah.
Seventy twenty-one, but like the second thing was just all like policy stuff.
No, but that was over two million dollars and one of them, damn.
Yeah, and I, no, I normally the moderator does read those off.
Uh, but is there any policy, we cannot set no policy here, that has to be done at town meeting to say we anything over a hundred thousand have to be voted, we can't do that.
You can do that, the, the if there's a concern about that process, then somebody has the right to raise their hand and say that we should be discussing.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah.
Right, or ask the question that are relevant to the fifteen, we, well, we have the materials in front of us with what I need to provide my answers, the page numbers to reference to all of this. People will welcome during that talk to say, I don't want to push these through, which would.
I don't know how you get to, I don't know how you get people there, I think it's pretty sad, you only have forty registered voters there, you've got twenty-six hundred registered voters, I think, and I don't know how you get them there, I know how you get them there, you're about triple a tax bill, they were rattled out. But I mean, I don't know how you.
We, we heard a lot, I mean, turnout was well below average, they were about a hundred and forty voters.
Yeah, that is.
Uh, we had two hundred and fifty last year. You had more empty spaces on the ballot than you had ones that had names on them. Uh, you like to think that when things are going good, people just let it lie. Um, but I think people are less engaged than they ever had been and they're pacified largely with being able to see what's going on by watching us tonight. Uh, not that that's great and wonderful, cause the town doesn't go around if we don't have seats filled, so.
But I mean, you know, I mean, that's kind of, when you have more, spend more time giving out awards or running the meeting, I mean, I don't do it more time, but about in March.
It was, it was, just as much if not once. I've heard a lot of complaints about the start time, the seven thirty start time, I for a few people showed up, we got a large number of complaints and I don't think that the cold weather and things like that helped with that, so it may be something that this board wants to review in the next couple of months and start floating it around, maybe we put a newsletter article together. Um, I'd see what's.
We kept doing it irregular voting like in November, cause people remember coming to that and our numbers are much higher for.
Yeah, but you, but your end of the year stuff isn't all done or nothing by then.
No, we, we can't go any earlier than we go. I don't believe, uh, I mean, we have people that said, I didn't even start to vote for myself because I thought we voted on Tuesday. But I don't know what else we can do, we sent a newsletter, we have text reminders, we've got electronic signs, we've got, it's in the paper. You know, we notified the symbol to get an article and things like that, so.
Well, triple, triple a tax bill, that would get them there, have the town office open one day a week or something, that would get them rattled out.
So regarding the angry masses, that's, Chucky, I love that.
Yeah, true, duly noted, uh.
But I mean, and I'm sure Brad did not do that vindictively, he just.
No, I don't, I don't think so either, right?
Nobody did vindictively.
I mean, I put one of them through to all those ones that didn't have money involved.
It just happened.
Several times.
At least half the time, since I've been.
Oh, yes, it happened twenty years ago, I remember the first time they did it, they got through the money once and they did it and thought there's a couple people vote.
They didn't speak up, they didn't say.
Yeah, no, all right, well.
Cause you know, they still advertise the the town meeting, this was the noon in town meeting, supposed to be the I don't know, best example of democracy or something, but it is, cause you can do wonders and shit cucumbers to everyone, oh. If you can get the hospital there and do it, hopefully I'll be getting another letter. All right, well, thank you, Chuck.
Yeah, there you go.
Noted on most of that.
I don't.
How are you gonna follow that?
Wish I did.
Oh, she got something better than do wonders, cucumbers.
Oh, maybe you'll get a letter too, you can check it out.
Believe me, I get plenty of.
All right, and nothing from myself, so we'll dive right into the town meeting this report. Uh, cucumbers are ways.
We got lime, we need to take care of that.
In the last meeting, we had talked about paving the entrance to the sewer plant and that was tabled, we reached back out to USDA, they have said that a generator setup there with Dexter Street would be a all-time project, so all of our associates, remember that name vaguely, they are now working on a process for us. There will be, uh, generator tank sets and fencing, um, and we'll get that to us hopefully early next week, so that we can take a look at it inside. You know, are we gonna bid that out, move forward with it? If it's reasonable, I'll just ask them to move forward with bidding and then once we take a look at that, then we'll be able to review the proposals for the driveway if that all fits together, which was the hope, I think, in the last meeting.
So just one or multiple locations?
I think the one that we thought was Rebecca, Rebecca Street is the only one that, other than that, he was kinda spending money to spend money. Like our driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rebecca Street goes on whatever. Uh, your waste water loan payment, that will be due next month, we got notice of that, that's a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Um, thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand interest, that's funded by your sewer rate payers and, uh, almost ninety-five thousand for transfer payment funded by taxpayers. Uh, the office firewall, uh, out front is, the support for that is end of life and so we need to upgrade, uh, we talked about, well, might be able to keep it going or whatnot, it's just irresponsible to do that. Um, and to let it ride, Lord knows we tried to let it ride and something would happen, so, no thank you. Um, and we're gonna do that, so that's gonna end up in a secure case, we're gonna add VPNs, it'll be an unlimited number of VPNs that we can have. Um, to make sure that you have your load access securely, which is something we don't offer, but isn't an upgrade, it's gonna come with what was proposed. That project estimate is thirteen hundred and that will just come out of operating budget, um, and then there's a little squint your eyes diagram on firewalls. Um, for folks to realize what costs thirteen hundred dollars that you can't really see or feel the benefit of. Uh, your full results of town meeting are available online and we'll post the minutes that were just approved for a while ago um, on there as well, the Franklin CDs matured, maturing on the twentieth. Um, that was a four month at four five five, so we generated just shy of sixteen thousand on that. Um, since I think I printed yours off, uh, I got the rate of four point oh two for four months. Uh, that will fall one month after, that RFP will likely come due, so we'll be able to either leave it with them or put it with somebody else, uh, at that point in time. Uh, we received a thousand dollars, uh, from United Way Harv May, uh, for senior fuel assistance. It's a pretty quick application that I fill out that allows us to do the one-off for folks, so if anybody needs assistance, whether imminent or just a primary plan long-term, there is a one-page application of the office, it is not income-based, but we do ask, uh, for a limited amount of information here, it's track that demographic and then be able to pay where appropriate. Uh, Matt and Barry are inside of our project and considering through the rumor mill that it was delayed and yes it is. Um, it has been caught up in funding and other project delays, uh, and so right now they're working wrapping up, hopefully right-of-way work and then mapping and appraisals, because as part of the right-of-way, they may have to go and buy a sliver for two hundred and fifty dollars, but that's all time money and so that's caused delays and at this point, everything stayed on track, they're bidding out next winter with the twenty twenty-six construction with the hope that we'd get it all done in one year, you remember that initially it proposed as a three-year project. Um, so we'll see how that plays out, but an unfortunate delay there.
Are we going to have a plan in place for the rerouting of traffic when that happens, cause I know that with, we had this summer, like before we seems like we've got a bigger one, it might be a blessing to figure something out, cause that was a nightmare.
So we have, uh, you didn't vote, but I heard from you folks that you wanted me to engage with an engineer to reconfigure
Yeah.
the Route Eight intersection in the south end of Perkins and Greenwich Street, so that I have done and I also secured um, state funding for that project, it's sixty forty, they'll pay sixty percent, we'll pay forty percent at the municipal partnership and so what that will do is the state will come in and they will pay sixty percent of the bill, engineer included, to push that intersection back so trailer, uh, tractor trailers can make that full turn safely, uh, re-strike, uh, make sure drainage is still appropriate and it's all gonna be within the right-of-way.
Okay.
Uh, existing right-of-way, there's no real estate acquisition, right, so we're working on that.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, they have an initial survey done and we're hoping to get that right bet out in May.
Cause that forty percent is covered through the road committee budget, the road budget, or does that come out of any other part?
No, it probably gonna come out of the road committee budget.
Okay.
To be determined.
Yes.
You know, we don't have a budget tender number yet, we'll get that number. Um, but I think that's a reasonable use of money.
Yes, I, I just wondered if you have that in common sense.
Honestly, if we, we get in a pinch with road money, I think that it's a serious discussion with other funds, whether it's emergency management or rescue plan or anything like that, or cost sharing of any of those because of the value. I mean, this is a very big value project and a relatively small investment, to be able to divert, if you have a fire, it's been down, down again. How do people navigate around? Or if you've got flooding in the street, how do people get around? Um, you probably have to go through this down here anyway, but it provides you unusual bypass opportunity where it never has existed.
There's a, I have a, on there.
I was just thinking.
It's been taken out of order by a truck trying to make that corner, well, that might need to be moved back.
That's what I figured that, you know, for shuffling that back. The, the hydrant tend to, will be pushed to the very edge of the right way, it will need to be relocated as a part of the project.
All things, that should be done anyways, we'd love it if it's just, I'm thinking about it.
Yeah, and it won't be, it'll be an alternate group and I think I have the state support to sign it as an alternate group where they normally don't do that.
Yeah.
Think it's crossed on the.
Yep, okay, potential parking, right, this has been an issue that probably two years old and we talked about other options, you know, people were parking at the Grange and then the Grange. Um, became a little passive aggressive with roping and things like that, we ended up having to say, okay, here are parking limits on downtown lots because, you know, we're hurting our businesses where people don't, so I approached USU Store, they have that large parking area out back. Should we do something, we initially thought, I initially approached them about some animals. Um, would that be something that they would be agreeable to when they really want the maintenance? They want plowing, little surface work and things like that, so I did get a meeting finally with the state and the state is very serious about considering it, um, they said they hadn't added one in a number of years, but when I started complaining about parking rents in proximity, we don't have it. There's one trivia, one up in Skowron, but there's nothing between Farnington and ninety-five. Um, there's nothing from here to Civic Center Drive in Augusta. So, we have a demand, we can demonstrate that, so would they help us out? Um, they're really targeting the five to ten year lease on that, um, I'm gonna draw up a proposal to them uh, aerial maps, measurements, probably parking spaces, snow, stockpile, um, traffic.
Well, you're right, the seven AM that, I, they're not waste management trucks, but it's every truck that's headed for waste management, there's parking right there and that thing is full.
Yeah.
Five of seven, man, there is no space to be had at all.
That's native spot, yeah, that's what I'm sure.
Right. So, I'm gonna work on putting that together, then I'm gonna submit that to them and then they're gonna come out and complete a site visit. They're also gonna draft a proposal agreement with the landowner as opposed to the management, um, and see if we can get it done. Um, and then the state, so I'd help them maintain it, whether they write out a, a check to them to offset their contractor, um, or what that's to be determined, but finally getting some traction there, I think that's a good solution, it's a business.
Probably the best we can come up with, I would say, yeah, yeah, so they own, they own all the way down to the mill stream, right?
Yeah, there's two parks there.
Yep, dude.
And they own it all, so, it seems like a reasonable opportunity, um, and they like it because inherently if you park there, you're probably gonna go in
Yeah.
one side of the.
Our way of living, yeah.
So, and it keeps us out of the business of being in parking rights, we don't want more property, you know?
Good parking for the athletic fields on the weekends when that's probably, it's gonna flood, it's closed.
It's good.
Yeah. Uh, privilege gathering question mark, I will contact a buyer resident convinced that we should do privilege events or gatherings periodically especially throughout the winter, so.
Yeah.
For sure, I said this was kind of the stuff that we hoped that another physician would have picked up, but she said, when I get back from Texas, she says, I'm willing to take care of it myself.
Who's that?
Your mom, I bet.
She's forgotten about that already.
She told me to call her.
That, like bingo too, I mean.
Really, yes.
Direct for kids.
I will say that I'm part of the Alex Club and they have done a Tuesday night privilege tournament down there and it has absolutely taken off, I mean, they stopped at the first year in the summertime due to, due to weather but after that, they haven't, because they do, they actually do, oh, sometimes they have meal, like you pay a little bit for a meal, it, it's so well received, they'll, they'll have twenty-five people, average, you know, well over twenty people on a Tuesday night, they'll play this privilege tournament, like I, I can't imagine why it wouldn't get well received, you know? So where else could we help?
Uh, so that was one of the things we talked about, whether it could be, um, at the, in the back room of the fire station for a small daytime thing, or if it was a grand fall or whereup, or that was something that she was for support with. Um, she had talked. I will, did she go away again, so.
Yes.
Um, the daytime opportunity for seniors that don't have anything to do, just the socialized, I don't know, and I said, well, that's a good opportunity for the management by education.
Good opportunity for the meeting room at Fairmont Housing too, considering, you know, all kinds of built-in players.
Yeah, um, so anyway, so those are the kind of things we're gonna work through, and if anybody's interested in being involved in that and and she talks about courage, but if somebody's got bingo or something else.
Courage is hard to word. Bingo is fun.
Help contribute with or take the lead on organizationally or anything else, I don't know, um, but I think that's a, a good opportunity by Brenda and, um, we'll see how that goes. But she's gonna be, she doesn't really care about the summertime, but she's thinking winter time activities for folks that might. So, uh, your first part, first part, budget meeting, uh, that's the business part, I went Uncle Martimo's located, uh, we've received notice of that for which we don't usually send anybody, we usually do what they wanna do, our assessment for this year is thirteen thousand. Uh, dividends will be paid and it is expected that we'll end up in a net positive position for this year, uh, we're still at about five hundred thousand dollars on that project. Um, but it, yes, since nineteen ninety-nine.
Wow, big enough.
Um, but you are starting to make some positive traction as long as they avoid debt. If anybody's interested in that venture, um, being a part of their board committee, general assembly, depending on to us, that's something that this board will end up taking an appointment on and it's not well attended, so if anybody.
So we need to point you where.
It's me and somebody else, um, but if somebody really wants to go and be involved with that organization, just reach out to the town office and I'm sure this like would anxiously appoint them uh, as a primary or alternate member to the board out there. In your packet, there's an elected official's workshop, Tuesday, April first, it is lengthy, make no mistake about that. Um, but it's also available on Zoom, so I thought that might have been more attractive to folks. If you want to sign up for it, please let me know and any other elected, uh, boards or committees that would like to sign up for that, reach out, we wanna make sure that it's within a budget, um, and make sure that it gets billed appropriately. Uh, your new plates, that's information, we're gonna push out the next newsletter, which is, and submissions are due by the end of this month, so if anybody board committee, organization or individual would like to submit anything for the newsletter, please keep that in mind, end of March. Um, and we're gonna push plate information out on that, the new plate transition, May first is when those will start. Um, your regular meetings coming up. Town office hours are not looking to be adjusted for the next two weeks and then my schedule, uh, next Wednesday, I'll be out, uh, York County has actually asked me to go down and speak with them uh, about emergency management, what did we come out of, uh, the December twenty-three storm, uh, what have we made for adjustments? What have we made for investments, uh, lessons learned and what are we still trying to work, what are obstacles that exist, things like that, so that'll be an all-day, um, event down there and then Friday the twenty-first, which is after your next meeting. Um, there is the manager interim thing, you're. I want to see discussion action on our March fifth, twenty twenty-five general warrant number.
I'm going to approve general warrant number five in the amount of forty thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second, there's a motion on the second, uh, any discussion?
Which trailer, uh, seem to, do we buy one or just the one we're buried for the thirty-two fifty?
Uh, we had truck number two go off.
On the road?
Yeah.
That's what that cost.
Saturday night at about eight, or nine o'clock, I guess it was, on Ward Hill, went on Ward Hill and then started going backwards till the ice went off the edge of the road and so we hired emergency truck service and they brought two trucks out, combined was a thousand dollars, now it took me three hours and then there was the two hundred and twelve dollar, uh, after hours.
Oh, so it wasn't just them, like we just got stuck in the back of the.
That's, so, oh, if there is, there was that's a certain.
Long business.
Um, but, uh. Right here, it was a check that we wrote to hold for the meeting.
For a week.
And then we turned back into the finance office.
Okay, that's just gonna roll it, okay, I was just curious.
What is ABDO?
ABDO is a, uh, I'll say book dealer, might be, that might be what it's named for.
Is that for the library?
Yes, and she secured a substantial brand to, um, really replace the young adult in children's section of the library. So she's ordered a lot, a lot of books, some of them come into the library, they're doing great job there. Any other discussion? See none, all those in favor? And that's everybody. All right, we'll dive into number ten here, a presentation by Matt Libby, uh, Choice Wealth Advisors regarding the town's investment position.
So, may I ask? Thirty-two fifty, we just spent.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like Lindsey was saying, I think I'm in. So thank you guys for the time, I know I've met quite a few of you, Jeff, welcome.
Thank you.
My name's Matt Libby, I'm financial advisor for Choice Wealth Advisors in Warrigal. I actually grew up, I don't know, half a mile up the road here, so my parents still live in the same house, they're enough, I grew up in, so from the area, I'm. So what we're gonna do today is kind of take a dive into, you know, how the account is set up, how it kind of came to be about, um, kind of look at the risk level that's involved in the account. Beyond that, sort of the account objective, you know, what our goals are for growing the account over a period of time. Uh, talk about kind of how the accounts actually allocated, you know, what we're actually investing in. And then we can kind of talk about where the account has been, where it is today, we've kind of where we see things going forward. Um, so certainly there are questions as we go through this, we'll agree to, you know, shoot those out, um. So really kind of the base of this, we at Choice are charged with managing this in a very conservative nature. So what that means is kind of on a scale of like one to ten, ten being most aggressive, one being most conservative. Ten would be all high-risk tech stocks, one would be keep money in the bank. We're at about a two or a three, so just kind of like a step above what we're looking at for you know, at the time from CD rates, money market rates, that sort of thing, um, so again, really investing this in a very conservative fashion. With that, our objective was kind of three fourths, so number one, generate current income. Number two, pursue modest growth. And number three, have a low risk of loss over a ten-year period. From there, you know, how do we actually invest the money, um, at this point, again, with it being as conservative as it is, it's about seventy percent in fixed income investments. So when I say fixed income investments, I mean things like corporate bonds, government bonds, treasuries, asset-backed securities, mortgage-backed securities, um, really just kind of more high quality in nature. Of that seventy percent, about sixty percent of it is in what we term intermediate core, uh, funds. So what that is, is the bonds that have maturities anywhere from four to six years and at this point, incidentally enough, they're paying for six percent in interest. Beyond there, there's about nine and a half percent in shorter-term bonds, so these are bonds that have maturities and you can think of these bonds similar to CDs except the main difference is that bonds have the ability to also appreciate in value. Versus CDs, you buy a CD for a thousand dollars, it turns out at a thousand dollars and really the only growth component of a CD is the interest piece. This is two-fold, where we have the potential for actual price increases in the bonds in addition to capturing that interest rate that it provides. So, the shorter piece of that, those bonds have about one to three-year maturities and those at this point are paying about four and a half to five percent. So from that perspective, interest rates are in a really good spot for what we do. Beyond that, to kind of cover the growth component of the goals, you know, with this account, is we do have a certain portion that's in stock investments. So there's about twenty-seven percent in stocks at this point, um, again, this is a snapshot in time, so these amounts do change periodically depending on kind of how we see the markets, um, and kind of what we see as the opportunities for the next twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months. With that, we are tasked with kind of staying within the overall allocations that have been set forth by you folks, so again you know, your, um, kind of qualifications for us is that this needs to be managed in a very conservative manner, so with that, we can't go a hundred percent in stocks and that's okay, we're working within the regulations that we've kind of, you know, been working on here. So of that twenty-seven percent, you know, a lot of that concentration is in US larger companies, so the largest holding is Apple at this point from a stock perspective, however, it's less than a one percent holding for the overall account. So it's still relatively small piece of the overall possibility. Beyond that, uh, there's about three percent in small and mid-sized US companies, about seven percent in international developed companies and international emerging market companies. and international emerging market companies. And then about thirty percent in commodities, so commodities are gold, silver, oil, gas, you know, things of that nature. So from both the stock perspective and the fixed income perspective, we're really looking at spreading out the risk as much as we possibly can. So what we believe is that prudent investing long-term involves well-allocated, well-diversified portfolios and that's what we're creating here. So the fir-, you know, the third piece of that is, interest rates where they are today, our money market fund is paying about four point two percent. So typically, prior to, say, twenty twenty-two, we would have a very, very small portion of the account in a money market fund because they really weren't paying anything, so there wasn't much upside to that. With that said, we're at kind of the higher range for that money market fund at this point, with that being about three to three and a half percent. Um and again, because it's paying about four point two percent on average annually. So that's kind of how the account is set up, um from, and I know we've kind of talked about this in the past too, from a account performance standpoint. We've had quite a rocky road from the start, so when I say this, the account was starting in October of twenty-one. So from October, call it October first, through the end of twenty twenty-one, it was up about thirty-ish grand. So the end of twenty twenty-one was positive. Twenty twenty-two, as we've talked about before, was the worst time to invest in conservative investments ever. I usually can't say that, usually I can point to some, you know, point in time where things have happened before. Twenty twenty-two was truly a once-in-a-hundred-year event. I can further kind of show that if you guys look at page three. Page three basically shows the average bond returns going back to nineteen seventy-six. So if you look at the top there, essentially forty-three out of forty-eight years, if you invested how we've invested, you would be positive. Five years, you would be negative, however, if you look through the gray bars here, the gray bar represents the annual uh total return for that year. And prior to twenty twenty-two, the worst year you would have had if you invested in a similar fashion to this would be down three percent. To kind of further elaborate that, we all remember two thousand eight, two thousand nine, markets were down thirty to forty-five percent. Bonds and fixed in- income investments were positive six to eight percent. So even in the worst years from a market standpoint, bonds, conservative investing tend to perform pretty well. Fast forward, if you look at that really ugly gray chart on twenty twenty-two, negative thirteen percent was again the worst year that we've ever had in bonds by multiple of four. So again, it shows really the drastic nature of what happened in twenty twenty-two. So as a reminder, twenty twenty-two, we had record-high inflation. So in order to try and combat that record-high inflation, the Federal Reserve took interest rates from zero to about five and a half in the course of nine months. Again, we've never seen that before. When rates go up, they tend to go up very slowly and in very small increments. But they really turned the gas on and that increased very, very quickly. And unfortunately with bonds, what happens is when you have interest rates go up, bond prices go down. So what that meant for the account is the account was down eleven point three five percent in that first quarter. So again, starting with two point five, went through what happened in twenty twenty-two. It didn't matter what you invested in in twenty twenty-two, stocks were down over twenty percent, the average bond, as you saw, was down thirteen percent. We were down eleven point three five percent. So I say that there was nowhere to hide unless you just stayed in cash. However, that's much more of a timing conversation that we'll have in a little bit here. Um so kind of following that, we've had very solid returns since then. So coming through twenty twenty-three, the account regained about a hundred and ninety thousand, goes up eight point five percent. Last year, twenty twenty-four, another solid year, so gaining a hundred and thirty-three thousand, up five point five percent. So far this year, with the markets actually being negative for the year, with stock markets being negative, that is, the account's actually positive about two point three percent. So it's up about sixty-two grand for the year when most areas of the markets are negative. And again, that goes to show, kind of comparing it to two thousand eight, two thousand nine, this is why we invest in this manner, especially for the town. You know, the idea is that when stocks are down, you should be up and that's shown that, you know, so far this year. So to kind of further elaborate that, you know, I think especially with longer-term funds, it's very easy to kind of get in, kind of caught in short-term cycles. So kind of seeing, you know, what's working today doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be working twelve months, twenty-four months, you know, down the road. So what I've shown here is this actually shows this particular strategy of ours and the returns over the last six years. So on average, this sort of strategy has returned five percent per year. Again, that includes that outlier of twenty twenty-two. But we know that periodically we are gonna have down years. Um however, from this, you know, if you look at the longer-term averages, we have years where this is up twelve point six five percent to offset those years that, again, I think twenty twenty-two is very abnormal, so I I I can't ever say that that's not gonna happen again. I wouldn't be doing my job, I wasn't trying to cover all the bases, however, it's a very, very abnormal situation. Um and you kind of see that where, again, going back to, you know, almost fifty years, we've never seen anything like that. So, you know, kind of looking forward, you know, I think from a fixed income standpoint, we're in a really good spot. So interest rates again are quite a bit higher, um. At this point, as of the last week or so, the markets are actually predicting that rates are gonna be cut two to three times this year. So what we've been doing over the last eighteen months is we've been locking in a lot of our bonds for a longer period of time so that we can make sure we capitalize on those higher interest rates, knowing that very well, eighteen, twenty-four months from now, rates are gonna be lower. So Richard kind of mentioned it, even with CD rates, you know, at the local bank, those are coming down. So instead of kind of playing this game where we kind of just wait and see what interest rates are, we'd rather take the higher rate today, make sure we're locking that in for five, six, seven years and then still having that potential for capital appreciation on top of that, um. And that's where, you know, the markets are changing quickly, so if you would have asked a month ago, we would have said one rate cut this year was likely, but a lot has happened in the last few months.
Last few days.
That's it, yes, so again, our task is to navigate through all that kind of stuff. So, you know, sometimes there is short-term pain, saw that in twenty-two. However, our goal for you and for the town is to consistently have this grow over time more so than you can get, you know, at the local bank or the CD, which comes in that nature. So, you know, with that, we're really confident in kind of the long-term plan for that. We're in a good spot with the interest rate piece, um and again, still having that potential for appreciation on the bonds as well. And then longer-term with the stock market, we're still very positive on the market piece of it, albeit with this, it's a pretty small portion, you know, twenty-seven-ish percent overall. But we're still very, you know, constructive on stocks longer-term. I think if you ask me over the next three to six months, I think we could have some pain in the stock market. Um just because we have a lot of stuff to air out, as you know, Chuck was saying. Tariffs, immigration, government spending, you know, there's a lot of different stuff going on domestically that I think needs to get ironed out. But we know that longer-term, you know, in the stock market, you do need to have some exposure to have that growth potential. And again, the ultimate goal here is to be long-term achieving results that are better than what you can get from a CD in a more, you know, still in a conservative fashion. So we really like where we're positioned at this point, you know, I think long-term, this is still the best place for that to be, um and kind of keeping in mind that we're working off kind of an endowment strategy, so the idea is this is truly very long-term. So with those endowment strategies, you really wanna kind of dig your heels in and, you know, pick the correct investments that are gonna be there for the next, again, two, three, four years. So I feel very confident in kind of where we are at this point, um again, we can't ever guarantee anything. So there's always chance without, you know, with any investment that you make. But, you know, I think from where we've been, um especially on the fixed income side of things, fixed income is much more about math than it is about, you know, stock market fluctuations, so barring any of these bonds just defaulting, just like CDs, um you know, barring any of those kind of occurrences. Then what happens is, you know, we buy a bond today at ninety cents on the dollar, we hold it for five years. It turns out at a hundred and you've received four to six percent each year as that's gone on. So that part, we're very comfortable with, you know, I think we're in a good spot from that perspective. And again, the higher interest rates makes a big, big difference, um and that's why we're really kind of capitalizing on where those are now because they are dropping and they could drop relatively quickly, so. So our suggestions are to kind of keep going with where we are. Um again, we're making changes periodically as we see fit, so we've made a couple of changes over the last three months because of kind of what's going on. But it's more capitalizing on opportunities that we found, more so than, you know, trying to change anything drastic. It's more just, you know, opportunistic, you know, funds that we have.
It's the opportunity, are you also looking for a mitigation of risk as well, like?
Yeah, yeah, so that's in, it's kind of built into the fixed income to a certain extent, so with this, if it was a more moderately invested account or more aggressively invested, that would be the conversation because stocks obviously do carry more risks. I think inherently with the fixed income being seventy percent of the portfolio, call it seventy-five, seventy-three, seventy-five, if you add it in the money market fund, that to a certain extent is the protection piece of it. On top of that, the, the only way that those necessarily go back down is if interest rates dramatically went up. And we don't see that that's a case today, you know, we don't see that that's, you know, part of the equation that we are kind of looking at.
Makes sense. For what I know, if you make it sound good, right?
It's, don't freak out, just stay.
Yeah.
When you get like three and a half years on two and a half million dollars, so really only be up like hundred and sixty grand, like that's not
Sure.
An entirely guarding of our CDs, but I get it, we have to.
I think that's discounting twenty twenty-two.
Yes, because I was, I was seriously concerned whether we made the right choice of investing in the town's money after such a big hit, so short into it, I it's like, wow, did we do the right thing?
And that's kind of why I wanted to show you the one-term returns of this, so the idea is if the money had been invested twelve months before or twelve months after, we're not having that conversation.
Yeah.
So it's purely the timing perspective of it. And there isn't a single person that I could tell you that predicted what was gonna happen in twenty twenty-two. If someone did, they'd get kind of performed on you today.
Right.
Um it's just such an abnormal thing to happen and the timing of when that money came in. So again, if you would have invested in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
But it'll obviously be more money in twenty-two.
If I'm looking at.
You'd be quite a high.
Matt, just in the first few months so far this year, we're already sixty-two.
Right, 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 I can, I can deal with those numbers.
You know, if you look at that for all of our, it's one thirty-two.
Two point three six percent though, so like I, the only thing is, I know this CD rate is going down, I saw that we just made sixteen grand off of that CD with less money invested in only, what, four months? So I know those are going down, that would be my only concern, but this is like our actual like return on the investment. Should we be moving things around to something that we know exactly what we're gonna get?
So it's been two months, it's only March fifth. So again, if we analyze that, that's quite a return for the year.
Yeah, which, I would appreciate if you could average that for us.
Right, yeah.
And I certainly don't wanna put that expectation out there, but that kind of return over a two-month period for this sort of investment is very, very good. Beyond that, if you actually look at page four, you know, this is kind of going back to all your time about CD rates. So yes, you can put ones at four, what you said, or two to four five, so the last one was for a four-month period. So again, all those numbers are quoted in annual percentage terms, so you're not receiving four point five percent in four months. You're receiving basically a third of that. So looking forward, you know, what this chart shows is the last twenty years of C, twelve-month CD investments. And yes, those interest rates are higher now, but they also correlate with what inflation is at the time too. So if you look at the bottom here, if you look at the last twenty years, the average CD rate over that time period is one point nine three, while inflation has averaged two point five six. So in real terms, you're going backwards. So again, the idea is that we need to be receiving, we need to be growing this at a higher rate than inflation to at least keep up with that. And CDs historically do not do that. So even, you know, back in two thousand five, two thousand six, the rates were kind of similar to what we're seeing today. However, at that point, you can see they dropped really quickly and they also coincided with higher in- uh inflation rates too. So that's why we see higher interest rates on CDs now is because inflation has been higher as well. So when you factor inflation in, which I like to call is kind of the silent killer, you know, it drops your account without you seeing it. But when you factor that in, the real return on CDs is going to be negative. So our recommendation is always, for money that you need in the next twelve months, CDs aren't the way to go. For anything to need more than that, you're gonna safely be going backwards if you invest long-term money in CDs because of inflation.
The future is not ours to see. I mean, that pandemic really drove this shit out of the inflation because it shortened the supplies up so that really, that drove it, I never kind of artificially induced our mode.
Yeah, it was that plus demand, so there's a lot of money going out, so there is too few goods, too many dollars, um so it's kind of a combination of all those things. But, you know, that's more kind of a stock piece of this and that's where this being a more conservative portfolio, um you know, you can see even in twenty twenty with this portfolio, it's positive. So, you know, even in those kind of stark circumstances, um. So I definitely get the allure of kind of looking at the CDs and saying, hey, maybe that's the way to go, but it's really a short-term fix that doesn't fix your long-term problem. And again, the reason why we started this was because CD rates weren't enough and that's why we went down this path. And historically, sticking to something like this is going to beat the CD rates longer-term, so.
Makes sense.
You and me, so you know what, they're gonna kick your ass.
Well, I, I just want to note that like, it's not like, you know, sometimes like with like a plural K with an investment strategy like that, like you've decided what you're gonna invest in and you kind of like write it out, like, uh you gotta know that you're taking it into a different, but also mitigating that risk because I feel like they're putting on the precipice of like, who knows what shit's gonna hit the fan with all the stuff.
Yeah, yeah, who knows?
I mean, we don't have crystal ball, but like the bottom's gonna fall out real hard and that's two and a half million dollars, so I know that we're
Well, I think that's.
invested, but that thirty percent could really be a real kick in the chester.
I would argue, so if you look back over the last sixty years, if you just invested in stocks, made ten percent on average per year. There are years like two thousand eight, two thousand nine where the shit hits the fan and they're down thirty-eight, forty-five percent. However, if you would have just stuck with it, that does rebound.
It did rebound, yeah.
You wonder at the time.
That's, that's a thing, so, I mean, investing takes fortitude, it takes, you know, you have to have the stomach.
It's why it's merits, because you're doing the band.
See it with your own money, but when it's not yours, it makes it look like you're a bloodthirster.
Yeah.
You know, like those are, that's not five dollars, so like I, you know, I look at that two hundred eighty-seven thousand, it's like, I'm puckered right at one, and that one like makes me prepare.
Yeah.
You know, I get it personally, but like as, you know.
I think it's obviously in, we're a little old, saying, seeing the forest through the trees.
Yep.
So again, you can get very caught up in the short-term fluctuations.
Like pitchforks coming through the.
Well, it's so, it's something to us, we weren't really sure if it was appropriate to invest the talent in this way, so I, I'm, I'm liking seeing it come back and I'm, I'm liking what you've explained for your strategy. It does put some peace of mind into knowing that we're not just gonna show up someday and have lost two more about it, you know.
Yeah, we just want to be, you know, like, frame like it's a tiny little baby, you don't wanna like get crushed or ruined, that's.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, I, I like to always say that, I'm advising, just like I advise my parents. So I'm not telling you guys any different, I'd be telling them in terms of, you know, longer-term perspective.
Relationship with your parents, that makes me a long time.
I, I just say that, you know, with all of our clients, we're here to provide our service. Again, I'm gonna be as truthful and honest as I always can, so I'm here to long-term make this grow. Sometimes I do have to tell you things that you're not like, that's just part of how investing goes, there are gonna be years where this is down. You know, I wouldn't be telling the truth and whoever was sitting here wouldn't be telling you the truth, they're just saying it's just gonna go up forever. You know, that's just not gonna listen to, yeah. But, you know, from that, investing in this fashion, being diversified, being more on the conservative side, you know, the appreciation should be there over a longer period of time, just sticking with it is always the key to success with investment.
That portal Bernie made off.
Yeah, a slightly different.
Yeah, a little different.
I think a little different, yeah. You. What are you getting or they end though?
Yep, uh board, have any thing else, any other questions, concerns?
If we go to Charlie.
Thanks for your response to this, yes, uh just so you know, the last time we were talking about CD rates and portfolio performance, somebody called me the next morning before ten o'clock to say, hey, I was watching your meeting last night and I. Portfolio performance, somebody called me the next morning before ten o'clock to say, hey, I was watching your meeting last night and I wanted to explain this to you.
So, so I was sixteen-month-old, so I had all this time to like watch this, and I just happened to watch that night, and I was like, oh, okay, well. Again, I want it to be open communication between all of us, so if there ever is any disappointment, any, anyone upset, anyone have questions? You can get a hold of me, I'm here, you know, I can, we can talk through whatever's kind of going on, um. And that was kind of the point, which is just, let's have a communication, yeah.
We appreciate that, and transparency just needs to be there, you know. I appreciate the accountability and the explanation of everything and the, and the chances to know that, you know, you are. Taking care of.
These comparisons would be if we took the money that was in the CDs for that same time period, that would put, to see what that made her, was that just a?
Look back, it's like, oh, I should have done this one, but, but, you know, I know.
In, in this world, yes, I would have said everyone buy CDs at the beginning of twenty twenty-two, we'll get out and then we'll get back in at the beginning of the year twenty-three. But that's not realistic, so. So yeah, I'm available, you know, if there are questions to come up after the fact, feel free to let me know, um.
Favorite part of me, uh, public comment? For Doc tonight. Okay, well, since we now, we'll just, we'll roll forward in the twelve here. Discussion action on appointment, uh, for the planning board, they answered. Uh, so things have changed, we had an application sent to you. Uh, the applicant contacted me late in the day yesterday and asked if she would be withdrawn from consideration at this point in time. And so, uh, the motion and order will enable this item. Second motion, the second, the table, uh.
Who was that? Data?
Yeah. Uh, there are a number of vacancies still, we have two vacancies on the planning board. We've got two vacancies on the sewer commission, both of those are gonna be doing a lot of work here and they're important. Uh, we've got a vacancy on the budget committee, I believe. Uh, I've just posted online all the vacancies, I've updated committee and board descriptions, what do you do, what are your meeting frequencies, things like that. And you can apply online, noradoc.org/volunteer, it is, and there's an application, it's quick and easy to submit it, and then we can appoint, um. People are gonna be happy if the sewer commission increases rates and restructures this and that, um, it would vote the seats. But that's what they're gonna be, that's what they're gonna be looking at, so if you or anybody you know are interested, please get online or stop by the office and apply.
Do we alter the, um, appointment term for when we, like, we appoint it this way when they're not elected, like, some of them are two, three-year seats? Is, do we shorten that amount of time when we appoint it, or do they get that?
No, so what gets confusing in my office is when people don't complete their term on a three-year term.
Okay.
That is still a three-year term, so then, you're, you're elected to a three-year term and you quit after year one. That three-year term is still there, but it's only got two years left.
Okay.
So we're backfilling your two-year term, and we see a pair out in the school where we've got a three-year term. And then we appoint somebody for a year, and then they quit, and then we get the next year.
Okay.
Uh, that seat always has the same seat expiration, and then a holder you give for three more.
Should we be looking at that type of time investment on those different ones, because we, sometimes we'll have them that's a one-year, two-year, or three-year, all within the same type of board? You know, is that maybe contributing to some of our lack of?
So, the reason that you see that on the ballot is because I have to fill the vacancy of the seat that expires.
Well, certainly, should we be adjusting that as a board for?
You can't.
We can't, they have to be a three-year, they have to be a two-year, or they?
Everybody's a three-year, it's all a three-year, but I need to fill that seat for the balance of the three years. It would be really perfect to have somebody running for three years, serve three years, right, right?
We're the only one here, our client.
Tax assessors, and then your parks committee, your airport committee. Those, I'm, it moves, you're probably talking about restructuring that, but I think the other thing is that people are hesitant of a three-year commitment a lot of times.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean, like, if we restructured those, like. There's gotta be something that we can do, because I think that is, people have never done it, they don't wanna sign up for something that long, and maybe that's why we're stuck in the spot where nobody wants to jump on, like. How can we restructure without, I don't know?
So I'll tell you what I tell people that, on the Board of Appeals, and that is, the Board of Appeals is five years. You can always quit. I get that, but the Board of Appeals doesn't meet very often, but it's important to have people that are informed and educated, sitting on that.
Know what's going on.
All of our boards, that would be right.
The appeals board is the last board before we all end up in court. You want a very thoughtful and well-educated board, and so Todd's been on it, been a part of hearings.
Yes.
And it's not easy, and it's the last line before we go to scary.
The boy likes to be the judge of their ears.
Appeals of you, appeals of my decision, and all of them, all go there. It's a five-year term, it's a significant commitment. Uh, and so people don't wanna be a part of that.
Yeah.
And then we hope that we can get them roped in and that they forget that they're on and. And the library board is five years, we didn't get too much about it the other day, but that was one of the articles that was passed at town meetings, that's not three years, starting next year, the terms expire really in three years.
So that's how we would have to change it, and it's wanted to be at like, that is a miracle for the town, vote to change those appointments.
Same, right, right, so if we wanna stagger the selectees.
My only question is, if you were to do that, if you get rid of the three-year term. Or you got one year, if you're struggling with three years, you're gonna struggle every year. Yeah. I, I, I understand what you're trying to do, not give a three-year commitment, but I'm just asking to look at it, if you're struggling to fill it every three years. Probably you're gonna make it any better, try to fill it every year.
Look at our department, and that's one that doesn't go on the ballot, and that we fill those seats with that, I mean, we do that completely differently than we do a lot of the other ones, and like.
They're dealing with different clientele people to a younger, they're, they're interested in what their kids are doing, and probably be part of.
So, it's very unique, I would say, for a town our size to have an elected planning board. Yeah, it's elected, and that comes from history, right, that's the experience, it doesn't have the talent at his head. You have a select board of points, really, it's very unique that you have a separate board of tax assessors from the select board. It's usually selectmen, assessor, and overseer. Yeah, we have a separate board of taxes.
So can we change that, like, why?
It's historic, I think this, I've been here long enough, but some people have. History, any of you, history in this town has said they want it separate. It's no different than this board being five people that expire every year. The, the right thing to do from a government management perspective is stagger three-year terms, so you don't get a turnover, you get some signs of stability. Uh, but that's not always popular among the voters, they want the ability to get you gone, and they wanna get you gone in a one-way, three-years to get you gone. So it's, it's unique in how you get people to be involved, and what I'm trying to accomplish in doing that is telling people that. The work is important, and I'm trying to cancel as many meetings as I can. I don't want you to meet strictly to elect a chair.
Here's the broad, the road committee.
What?
The broad's a road committee.
We buy lunch for road committees, but we have very contractors that don't bid on our work, that provide us. Very, very expensive advice for the cost of lunch, and we can meet at noon time. But you don't want to create, it's not easy necessarily to get them all together, but we've got library trustees that meet three o'clock in the afternoon. Wonderful, if you don't work, you meet at six o'clock in the evening, that's great, if you don't work, or you don't have kids. It's, it's.
It's no good.
No, it really isn't. But it's just in the last ten years that we can't staff these committees, and it's, I think people have gone and found other obligations. We've tried to go, here's five hundred dollars, and that doesn't work.
We had, when, when I first started on the road committee, there was never a problem with the five seats.
No.
We had five seats every, all the time.
No.
Now, now we have, we're, we're down to three.
And we kind of have kept it at three candidly, because it's going smoothly, and we don't want something like the road committee to become political.
Yes.
We want a neutral.
But we made a lot, my, my point was, we had a lot of interest twenty-five years, twenty years ago, we had.
Right.
No problem.
Involved in this change.
The, but the road's a lot better, so if you went dickens, though.
A lot of truth there, too.
We only have a couple.
We're doing such a good job on the force that nobody thinks we need.
Yes, that's exactly, people just have the expectation that somebody else is gonna.
Yeah.
And not to edit or realize towards it, because the new position went down in flames, so the message is clear. But what people need to understand is that when parks committee, the rec committee, it was bored, ignores that. Because you are realistic about what people want to see and who's stepping up to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
And so price tag is difficult, but that's the cost of folks not stepping up to do it, because I only have so much time in my head, that I won't get to that.
You can put your reorganization ideas like three-year selectmen terms and things on a town meeting warrant. Put it the last article. And put back the next year, now, not drive your attendance at town meeting, I mean.
This is a good idea.
You think that's a good idea?
Stagger them, no, oh, no, to sta- to sta- to, to have the three-year terms for this board, I do, I do, the, the one-year.
I don't think, I don't think a good idea for the last one on the one.
Oh, yeah, no, probably the last one, but I, 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 I do feel it would be something, you know.
Discuss for this year.
Yeah, certainly.
Have we had many people quit, I mean, you have, we have, yeah, being that, that's how I got in so easy. Quit being selectmen.
No, no, we actually haven't, that's the first one since I've been here, and that's strictly because they.
No, I guess there was competition, wasn't there?
Everybody just, um, they, and their term, they don't seek reelection again, yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, Jim and Ronnie, they done it a long time, I mean, no reason why they shouldn't quit after a while.
They just didn't.
That's what he wanted.
I mean, but they done it long enough, so I don't, might move on.
They served it, true.
What?
They served it a long time.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Ronnie was seventeen years, I bet Jim was ten, wasn't he? So, I mean, you can't say that they, you had a lot of turnover in them at all.
No.
And it's come from, you did have the, that, whatever, who did you have? That shot, but she moved, so that really is kind of a, probably still been here.
Well, I think she would be.
You wouldn't have to put up, you wouldn't have put up with me. Yeah, but you get nasty letters and everything.
Anyway, um, it's, it's really, if you have any great ideas or advertisement campaigns or anything like that, I will take whatever you can offer.
I mean, the selectmen, it don't seem to be the problem, it's the, it's that sewer one is the worst one, that's all it was. Yeah, well, that is, but, but then that, but when the word got out, you did have three different writings, it got quite a few, well. There are more voters in your hand, you had quite a few, you had quite a few writings, really.
What word got out that we only had four, I think is what.
I mean, I think probably some of them that, they had the writings, probably might have taken the papers up, they had really, well, they should realize, but. Because no one gets a paper anymore, some people's a stupid guy and they don't know how to run a computer. I don't know, I hope, no, I'll rephrase that, I think anybody is stupid guy.
Matt, you, if the messages are clear, you had thirty-eight people voted on the, the gazebo.
Yeah.
Uh, if you add the yeses and the nos, right, so, I don't know, there might have been more voters than that at town meeting, but not many.
Yeah.
And, and all the open seats on the, that's, something's gonna change.
Right.
And I don't say tomorrow, I don't say next year necessarily, over time, something is gonna change.
Okay.
I think we start the cricket and bingo, and the winners of that get a seat on a board.
Because if you look at, I don't think Skowloon has that problem, because they have such freaking controversy all the time, and what's going on in Skowloon. So people are, and, and I think what you said about complacency, things are going pretty smoothly.
Yeah.
But more by, we don't have a lot of kicking, screaming, yelling, you vote, you vote in Skowloon. And they did triple, they, they doubled the taxes. And, and, and they have a lot more people saying, well, I'm gonna get involved in this, and we have, like you said, we haven't had any controversial.
Yeah, no shit.
The trouble is, like you said, the sewer committee, sewer committee, I mean, that's, that's a bigger one than people realize, because. Like you've just said, you, you, you addressed that in your, in a prior meeting that I'm seeing, as to the rates which are gonna have to. You know, your water and sewer rates, anybody that's on water and sewer, they're gonna, they're gonna feel it. And they have. So that may start more interest, hopefully, but it's, it's a, it's a money-generated interest.
And you're gonna be a bad guy. Yeah.
Unfortunately, I think that's what it is, it's the places.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be bad, because my god, dear, oh, so, sewer rate went up, you know, and if people ain't gonna listen to you, you're gonna fold right out here.
No, hell, ended, that's.
I think it is, I think, yeah, it's, until this stuff affects the parking lot.
Yeah.
Like it did in Skowloon. I mean, we're gonna suffer from that problem, and I, we, you guys have done, the towns, you guys have done well to keep it all pretty well managed, but you're asking for some help. And it doesn't, hasn't affected anybody adversely enough for them to.
Be involved, right?
Yeah.
To have a group of angry people.
Right, right.
Seems as relative, we'll conduct, so say one more thing, but that is that you wanna run for the sewer commission, and you're, you're now sewer commissioner.
Congratulations.
Yes, it is, I'll give you your.
No ruddy, no plushy.
But, uh, is it futile, is it a waste of somebody's time to go and serve on that, now, this is just thinking aloud. Because the rates are gonna have to go up anyway, because we've got it very deep.
Right.
So what am I just wasting my time by going there, and I think the answer is, no, you know, we need creative perspectives, we need some law funding, nothing else. You know, how do you operate, things like that, and, and we don't have that right now. And candidly, we've lost the three folks that got off the sewer commission and didn't run for reelection, all have unique perspectives to offer. Um, and industry-specific knowledge that benefited the commission, but here we are, so. It's, it's, if twenty-five signatures is too much to ask for somebody, then they're really gonna be committed to the board of the committee at the end of the day. Maybe you're not gonna go up there and try to find somebody to, you know, you're happy the way things are going, I'm not gonna go proactively run against somebody, and when you see that there's an opportunity, okay, well.
You know, I always think about like, you know, I think that sometimes like we, we don't always look at the, some people are just, I know me, like, it's not that I'm not a one, but like. I always kind of feel like a schmuck ass, like, it's my least favorite part of this, and I get yelled at a lot by random people, and like, that's even less than like having to go up like. Please, I'm like, like, you know, I think that that, maybe a lot of people who normally would do stuff, they don't because of that, because it's just like, it's. Putting yourself out there and like, projection possibly, like, I think that that, maybe for some of our other stuff, we don't, I don't have to have that many.
Did you know about running? Don't wanna put you on the spot.
I didn't, you know, it means if.
In time, in time, yeah, yeah. We, nobody knew that people weren't running until it was too late.
Yeah, because the papers had to be in by the second of June.
Yeah, and, but it, when I found out I was gonna have to do a runoff possibly, it, it didn't affect me, I was gonna do it. But I made the commitment that I wanted to try this, and I was gonna try, I was gonna do it, so, it didn't want me to change my mind.
But you did, did you see anything as an obstacle to getting involved in the first place, or was it just that there was an opportunity, and so what that?
Yeah, no, it was more the opportunity, um, the obstacle really, the job I have now helped. What I used to do, I couldn't do, like, for thirty-five years, I traveled out of state north, so I never was home in time, do any of the six o'clock event. Now, I'm around, so I was interested in it all to be, to brought up to.
Sometimes maybe we all just have to beg and plead people who know we're doing good on the board, and beg them to come on and do stuff, we don't have to do that.
If I only get three votes and I'm on, there was a couple of positions, I heard you got a vote, so are you gonna be?
Well, I'll, I'll take this, so, it's a shame to put me on another board, but if it's not filled, I will take one of the sewer commissioners.
We had just made like kind of some things up before that we shouldn't be on it, but we can, like.
I def- I definitely would, I just, again, I'd be ashamed to have it be me, but I will because it is important and.
How often do you?
I got properties on and off it, so if that, I care.
One of the things that always worked well, like Water District.
Because I'm all for helping out the mass, but ain't nobody gonna leave it in the subject at another property, you know, so, I get both sides of it.
Matt, one of the things that always worked well at the Water District, now that's an appointed board, appointed by you.
Yeah.
For those that don't know that, um, but we always come to you, to the select board with a recommendation to fill an empty seat.
Yeah.
Maybe some of the committee members, and I know some committees are entirely empty. But maybe they could come up with some committee recommendations, much like the water, and we've never had, ever had the trouble filling the water. And, um, sometimes I've had more candidates than, but, but there's always been a recommendation. From the remaining members of people they think that would be good at it, like water, hmm. Let's see, Robbie Bickford lives in town, and he's water quality manager for Quebec Water District. He might be a good one, so we approach Robbie, I, what do you think? Yeah, okay, so we put his name on a piece of paper and we send it to those folks. Now, that's not, you're not gonna get that lucky every time, but you, but why not? You guys are on.
You guys are, you're waiting for somebody to put their hand up. And come to you, what is the remaining board members, what, what is their? That, that has always worked well at the water district.
If you never had many money, many money bonds. Spend any money.
True.
That keeps people quiet.
It's a good idea.
But the remaining board members, you know, all them friends. Get the ideas. You got a friend you think might be interested or particularly qualified or available or.
We kind of did that with the road.
I bet the road committee is working very similarly.
Oh, yeah.
Or if we could do something like, obviously we can't have, you know, people who are the age of eighteen like this on this board, but I wonder if there was something that. Well, I know for parks, that's not like one that gets voted on. I wonder if there was some sort of thing that we worked with like a high school where they could get some types of credit, doing some sort of civic engagement. It's something that can, you know, pad college resumes by being on these boards, by being kind of like apprentice into it or, you know, and then. Hopefully, if these people stay in town, they've seen this and they wanna do it, like, do we give an opportunity? I mean, it's definitely a different perspective and fresh eyes at something, but maybe.
Something like the select board, you can't do that.
No, I know what this one's like.
Something like the sewer commission, which is established purely by ordinance in this town, for this town. You could probably lower that threshold to sixteen years old.
Yeah.
Or fifteen and give them no voter rights or.
Yeah.
You get a voter rights, who knows?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that a lot of high school kids might find interest in that because it's like, they want to be able to do something that's like. You know, grown up and then also just like the experience to have that sort of civic engagement, whether it's further in their career, their college, like application, things like that, but like we then get a. You know, another person, another perspective that's putting intelligent thought into the decisions, like, maybe that's something we try to actively like recruit for.
That's not a bad idea. Not a bad.
My question.
Uh, Matt, there is a motion.
I'm not going there, by the way.
Any further discussion?
All those in favor? And that's just whether you're in favor of tablebing that. Yeah, we'll table that.
Yeah.
Is it, uh, number thirteen? Uh, discussion action on release of town-owned property, tax acquired, uh, one eighty-six Smithfield Road. This would be a motion to sign the claim deed and release the town's interest. Uh, to previous owner for payment of all taxes, fees and interest owed.
So.
In second. Motion in second, uh, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody. Number fourteen here, our review, second, uh, review of select board policies and procedures, contact information and communication.
Is this just to go over, because we have a new member or is this something?
Well, this is where you do all the time, you mean, um, you have your administrative code, uh, you have your administrative code ethic, you have your board, um, ethics. Those are things if you need a refresher on that, please reach out to me and let me know. Jeff has been providing the real member orientation, they, they, I think it started last year, if not the year before. I updated that for him, um. Before he went there, I think again, something, I think early, early in doing that, um, and then pretty much it's. Yeah, this year we talked about the contact and communication, get a hold of me, have my, our, throw, we don't become a burden to me, but, um. It's easier for me to respond to you. Than, than wait two weeks and have to play from behind, um. If it becomes an issue, you have an issue with me, it goes to Matt, you have an issue with me and Matt, it goes to Lindsay. Um, and then if you have an issue with me, Matt and Lindsay, then take care of it. Um, I, I, I mean, we haven't had that, um, obviously people will have an issue with me, um. On occasion, if I don't feel comfortable going to Matt or going to you, just, you know, take the right decision and usually it's. Public related, not board related, but, um, you know, try to have a pretty free law of conversation. And then I want to remind everybody that your cell phones, if they are used for town business, you want to be careful what you put in, whether it's an email or text, it may be subject to freedom of access. If your frequent last questions brochure provides you, um. And if that includes if it's to me or other about sensitive business, when you put it in writing, you pretty much lose that protection, so if you have questions, pick up the phone and call.
Do we know?
Uh, anything else on that? No, thank you. Got any questions on that?
What do we need from motion? Are we just reviewing it or?
Um, number fifteen, discussion action on financial policies. Uh, so the first is the policy that allows for the treasurer to disperse wages and benefits, so those happen in between meetings. And, uh, what we've customarily done is appoint two people from the board, uh, that can sign off on those. Uh, last year Lindsay was the primary signer and Matt was the backup signer, um, but. By approving this policy and including two individual names, that allows us to keep business flowing as usual.
I'm fine with doing it again, I just, you know, Peter's son's making checks, I come over and sign and stuff for him.
So inferring that, the motion of order, we've approved a sign of payroll board policy authorized ever and Lynch's signatories.
So.
They have, how often, we sign every week?
Like every other week.
Every other week you sign?
At least every other week he gives somebody a text, I mean, like I have to drive by it, it's not a big deal, but like it's, you know, I am.
But they have to pay for it, sign for every payroll, right?
Yes, and both vehicles checks, it's weekly.
Yeah.
He's done it, honestly. It's, it's, it's that easy.
Snacks and like it starts it all up.
Yeah.
There's a motion in the second, uh, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Uh, the next policy is actually a new policy technically here. My recommendation would be to approve the same signers on this, but this is to legally allow us to release state fees, primarily motor vehicles, but also in industry's model. We did not have a policy in place, but we were releasing.
Okay.
So maybe municipal recommends that we adopt this, I didn't take it up in the year, stayed the course, but here we are, so my recommendation would be to approve the policy.
So moved.
Motion in second, uh, any discussion on the policy questions concerning? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody. The next is the tax payment policy and that is what requires people to pay their oldest taxes first. Um, and then also the postmark date and the fact that. In the restricted window of ten days, it says prior to the due date of a notice to lean, uh, or an automatic proposal that we must receive certified funds. Uh, gathered by the cat, um, in order to process that payment. The reason we do that is not to be an obstacle, but to ensure that we're not discharging a lien and then having a return check. And then having this trash value, sorry, um, it is in protection. So a motion.
So moved.
Here's a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody. The next is the sewer payment policy, this will be counter signed, hopefully by the sewer commission, you remember last year that they declined. Uh, at the outset, but this is, uh, very similar to the tax payment policy where your oldest sewer use charges must be paid. First and then we also need those certified funds and a ten day notice before, um. And then the ten day before the next week, um, it will be more than.
So moved just the policy of kind of policy?
A motion and a second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Uh, you have anything else under policies?
Other business?
I do not. Okay, uh, other businesses, the board have anything else or other?
I think I did forget to bring up. The walk around the cracks. Jeff can probably say, I know right in front of my house, it's getting, something new movement.
Did that get? They sealed, they sealed it just before winter, right? And then they were coming back.
So I've been going down the rest of the road to take a look at it the other way, but I know right there this. Yep.
Really?
It's better than a.
And there it is, they still coming back, is that where we left at? Uh, they had considered themselves pulled away from the project after they had that crack sale. That was, right?
Was that it?
Yes.
Were they gonna monitor it and wait, we'll see what it did in the spring.
They'll be monitoring. Saying that they require us, but it's getting them about. I'm waiting for it to back to all of a sudden. And they've done.
And I don't even want to, about, probably, if not, probably bigger ones.
Are we out of a window or warranty or are we still working with them and they're working with us about the appropriate cost sharing?
So they came in and they crack sealed for.
Nailed it.
So, um, let's see. You were careful with your words, I'll be careful with mine.
But, but no fun, let, let's try to take this.
There were complications with the warranty of the work. And so go pipe through the map, I mean, what they have done has been very, they cracked sales to zero. Um, and I think that they would help us crack sale, um, again. Ultimately, it's one of our, that is our responsibility, if that's, it rests. Fourth action for your account, but, uh, I can't complain about the way that they treated us.
No, and, and we.
Candidly, they don't owe us anything.
Okay, alright.
And they've done enough to keep in good graces with the town, they've done well by us.
Okay.
Yep.
There's all kinds of, what, a few fantastic stories built around, how come it cracked in the first place, right?
Well, let's not repeat them.
It's awful easy to be the money monitor back too.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, and that, this was a unique situation, the only time we've ever been in it and hopefully never in it again, and I, and I think. So far, it has played out pretty well, perfect for everybody involved, uh. Hopefully, we don't have to go back and skin it over if that's what it takes.
I mean, Pike, this is Pike's business, right?
They did, they have the contract.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so. I mean, I would think that they would wanna make that somewhere near right, as big as they are and.
Yeah, it's, they'll benefit a task. They have, uh, prior to joining the board, there were some issues that we had discussed that complicated the situation and maybe it was not it defeated Pike Industries. And I would be with that and trust that you will be satisfied.
Oh, yeah, that's where they were talking about the fantastic stories.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the board have anything else for other business?
Looks like there's something to add to, you know, to this.
Yes, please.
Move to add other business to the agenda?
Uh, discussion action on disposal of town-owned property.
There we go, so moved.
Motion second, any discussion adding this to the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody.
I hold my right hand, if I get hurt, so lift that shoulder. Oh, no.
Get Chuck to the house.
Yeah.
How dare you?
So we've got these two monumental desks, the one on, on the top is actually very nice, it's a heavy-duty wood desk, you're taking up space in the corner, so I, I can't give it away. And it could, but it seems like we are listing, and then the one over here is a decent table and, right, but it's just in the way now. And I'm, we're trying to weed things out, clean things up that we don't need, so, um, I'd like to be able to get rid of it and it's to your pleasure, how you'd like to get rid of it, if you wanna post it. I, I mean, do we go, we're gonna seal bid. Just say the first person that says X number of dollars, you can have it. Or do you just wanna?
I'll give you thirty bucks.
I just wanna put it on the curb.
What do you wanna?
That one.
You want it?
Do you need it? Where's the picture?
Nice.
Mine's only thirty years old.
Well, this isn't my fault.
Okay.
These it looks at, it's solid, it's solid, it's right.
That looks like.
I mean, what is gonna gossip?
We could make an arrangement if you give us the tax. Do you want that?
Yes. If the other town, tell the town boys, haul it over tomorrow.
That can last another twenty years.
Yep.
Yeah, I thought that.
So we got six months.
It's a big piece of furniture, I don't need it. Yep, um, okay, so the second one, just wanna do that. Post it for free.
Posted.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna come get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds good, so I hope that we take that course of action for these two items.
You need to vote on that.
Yes, please.
Oh, you do, okay, so this is motion a second, uh, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's everybody. I am going to step out a little bit because we've been talking about volunteers. I got a text message from Robbie Bickford. That he and Cody St. Armand were willing to take the seats on the sewer commission. There was two vacant seats there, two that were on their period, so you did not run. So it, it is a board of pleasure, I know this is a little unconventional, you could add appointments to the agenda and then you could appoint the gentleman to. Uh, terms that would end in town.
My only concern with that would be if we are having for any other open spot, people fill out the application, the form and we're bypassing that with this. I don't want to necessarily say yes this now without having that done because then that's setting a precedent for all of our other vacant seats for this type of. That'd be my only. I don't know.
The only thing I could say that could maybe bring cases that they were the incumbent and they just didn't run. So they technically already filled that out one time to get on the board originally.
Okay.
So they were just seated.
Does that mean I'm off the hook?
It's, it's on off the book, actually, um. So I don't, I don't, I don't, we can push it, we can push it to the next meeting.
Have them fill out the form.
And they, they, they don't meet before we do again, do they? They don't have anything scheduled, I need to get this committee staffed because we need to talk about it later. Two weeks is gonna make it, you know, but if you want an application, probably do that next minute. For, I'm tired.
I, I, that's what I'm gonna do, it was new, we're gonna get it, we just, that's the precedent, we're gonna come at them, let's come back.
Yes.
Find the bed as well.
That's it.
Yeah.
Did we have a lot of issues? Was it the water or is it sewer that we had all of the? Stuff happened that maybe things didn't run or didn't happen or votes wouldn't happen like that? Wasn't there a lot of?
Back in the day?
No, like last year, like was something that didn't get voted on, like there was a bit of like a crumple.
That was the sewer department when they didn't want to approve the surveyment policy.
And there was the same team on the board that refused to vote, put a.
No, these one weren't, they weren't present. At the meeting.
Right, dude.
So I feel like we, let's take a beating on this one then.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Have them fill out the applications and we'll seat them on a nice meeting. Consider seating.
Yes, yes, consider, consider.
So moved.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Alright, then that's it, anyone, anybody else?
I am a motion to adjourn.
Motion second, second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody.